Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Hamlet City Council. At this time, I will call on Reverend Marvin Taylor, Outreach for Jesus, to do our invocation tonight.
I didn't realize this was gonna be my last call to give with good goodness. It's an honor and privilege to be here. Thankfully, we've called it all night. But Bible says in all our ways and knowledge him, he would wreck our path. And thus, then we pray for his rest. Almighty God, I ask blessings on those that are called to lead our community, in which we live and we work and we pray. Give them ears to listen, because they are not only believers, but also servants to serve the common good of all. Grant them the wisdom, courage, to know and to do what is right, and let them be receptive and patient, because we may not understand the process at times. May the Holy One lead and guide them in love and in well-being of our community. Almighty God, above all, we give you thanks for this privilege, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dawn, would you pull that door shut back there, please? We've got sunlight shining in here.
He never heard it.
Thank you. Next item of business is the adoption of the agenda, and we have added 10A on there during the proclamation for the memory of Dr. McQueen. That'll be item 10A. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Move to adopt.
I second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. Item number four, we have the consent agenda before you counsel. Approval of the minutes of April 25th work session, approval of tax releases, and consideration of audit contract with Anderson, Smith, and White. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, at this time, we'll move along to the comments from attendees. I've got Mrs. Susan Sellers on this list. Ms. Sellers, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening advocating for myself and other older adults. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Susan Sellers. I was born in Hamlet. My father and all his siblings were born in Hamlet as well. He served the city and its citizens by putting his life on the line as a police officer, just as my husband did. I served the city and its citizens by being the first senior center director in Hamlet's history, so we have and are pro-Hamlet through and through. I began my position in 1985 and served the city for 28 years. I would like to give you a little bit of history about the center. Upon its opening, it served Richmond County residents as the first senior center in our county. For many years, it was the only senior center of excellence in Region N that encompassed 36 local governments in Bladen, Hoake, Richmond, Robeson, and Scotland Counties. It still holds that title today as the only senior center of excellence in our region. Richmond Aging Services does not have rights to claim this status. This evening, I'm addressing you as a former director who was hired by city manager Ron Nyland. Mr. Nyland had a vision of seeing that an old, dilapidated city garage fire department be converted into the present senior center. Initially, the city contracted with the Richmond County Council on Aging, which is now Aging Services. And in actuality, I was an employee of the Council on Aging. Maybe it was a couple of years later, but Councilman Bert Unger came to the senior center and asked me if I could manage the center independently from the Council on Aging, should the city wish to be free from outside control. I assured him that I could, and since then, the center has held its own entity operating as a department under this township. Both Mr. Nyland and Councilman Unger were men of integrity, being great leaders who inspired me to make the senior center one that stood out all over our state, and that is exactly what was accomplished, because that is what great leaders do. They inspire people, just as our brother just got through praying. Up until Mr. Unger's death, he served on the center's advisory council because he believed in all the good it brought to its citizens, not only in Hamlet, but as far away as the county line of Richmond and Montgomery County, Jackson Springs, Scotland County, Antson County, Moore, and surrounding areas just over the state line in South Carolina. In today's business world, a forward-thinking mindset is a prerequisite success in any business. In order to keep up with the changing needs, interest of customers, or in this case, the participants, you must be innovative, creative, and open-minded. It is essential to implement this type of attitude if you plan to be a great leader and inspire others' involvement. Being forward-thinking and business-minded is a similarity each of you possess. Great leaders inspire people. However, certain decisions made to disallow motor coach travel trips for the senior center demonstrates a regressive mindset. This is the reason I asked to speak this evening. Over the years, the center has taken numerous motor coach trips. During these trips, the center remained open, serving those who chose not to travel. I personally hosted trips to Florida, Washington DC, Hershey, Pennsylvania, a cruise to the Bahamas, and more. Never once was the senior center doors closed. For 28 years I served as the director, operation of the center has been supervised under the leadership of city managers Ron Nyland, Rick French, Lee Matthews, and Marshall Adams-David. Our honorable mayors have included Tom Smart, Abby Covington, Carrie Gardner, Jeff Smart, and Bill Bayless. Not any of these town managers or mayors have had any issue with motor coach travel until recently. I feel confident that if any of these aforementioned individuals should have had any issues, they would have come to me and worked directly with me to overcome the issue. They would not have easily given away anything that takes away from the city of Hamlet and the people that it served. I served along with Mr. Abernathy, with some other individuals, and hiring the current director's predecessor, making it known that an essential area of her duties would be working with travel companies, providing recreational travel for pleasure, recreation, and education. Recently, on the center's Facebook page, a statement was made regarding motor coach recreational travel. In it, it states the center will continue taking overnight trips, but only by utilizing the senior center's vans. How can this be acceptable? Extreme concerns that you must not overlook include if the van breaks down in another state after 2:30 PM when the city shop closes, or how about a weekend or in the late hours of night? This actually happened to myself while in Myrtle Beach as we departed from the Carolina Opry. I was responsible for securing a tow truck, taking care of the needs of 14 adults while waiting for repairs, and driving back to the center during the wee hours of the morning and expected to be at work at 8:00 in the morning. What about price feasibility for trips offered? Participants will not receive discounted price because of minimal number of travelers for hotel rooms, meals, tickets, or activities. The van is not handicapped accessible, nor has any designated space for luggage, walkers, or wheelchairs. Resort parking decks and parking lots do not allow trailers. Another true experience unbeknownst to myself, I carried a group in a van pulling the trailer filled with everyone's luggage for a three-day excursion in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. And because the resort did not allow trailers, I had to find an open storage facility where we could store the trailer those three days, and then I had to find transportation back to the resort to pick up the trailer, back to the resort, and then back again to the storage unit to pick up the van. The reason for utilizing motor coach transportation is because it is feasible, and should any mishaps happen, the city is no longer responsible. Trip waivers are signed prior to all trips. Motor coach vehicles are equipped with a restroom, and there is plenty of space and legroom for passengers, carry-on luggage, and certified drivers. The motor coach company takes responsibility for participants once they get on the bus and then after they are then, excuse me, back to the resort and, moment. Motor coach company takes responsibility for the participants once they get on the bus and again until they're returned back to the senior center. Motor coach recreational trips are not vacations for group leaders. These trips are work, and a lot of it. From the initial stages of advertising, taking payments, record-keeping, submitting payments for both the cost of the trip and insurance cost, scheduling departure meetings, developing PowerPoint presentations, arranging for the donation of snacks, drinks, and day of departure breakfast, planning travel games and securing prizes, making sure luggage is being loaded and unloaded, picking up breakfast prior to departure, arranging bathroom breaks, counting heads on and off the bus at every departure, passing out food, drinks, loading essential items for the trip, keeping to a timed schedule, providing traveler updates and information, calling, confirming restaurant reservations, juggling the needs of each passenger and aiding anyone who should become sick, securing room keys, making sure everyone is fixed and safe within their rooms, helping those who may be handicapped to get situated in their rooms and that they have no issues, making sure people are on the bus at the correct time, or having to locate missing people, and providing meetup times, escorting groups, and staying with the group or helping those who are in need. These trips are work, and a lot of it. The complimentary seat in question here is not a complimentary seat, free gift, or a reward. It is a stipend to the city, saving money for the city because the city would have to pay for a staff person to escort participants. The city would have to pay for the staff person's rooms and board. This helps to alleviate city costs. Complimentary, free gift, reward is a wrong terminology and mindset. In addition, every tour company requires the presence of a group leader to take responsibility for a group tour because of the extensive workload. Mr. Christian's argument is that city employees are not allowed to accept complimentary free gifts. Then create a policy that addresses this issue. There are so many policy options to choose from, such as passing along the discount to every traveler, raffling off this complimentary seat, using future complimentary seats as a fundraiser, because the center has to have two fundraisers each year to retain its senior center of excellence status, or hosting a contest in which the winner receives this complimentary seat, such as to the person with the most volunteer hours, because this too is a requirement to retain a senior center of excellence status. Don't dismiss these trips as inessential or unnecessary, or no longer provide them at the Hamlet Senior Center because it's easier to hand them off to another agency. For a senior center tour to reapply to the North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services for continual senior center of excellence status, which provides the city with over $20,000 in funding every year, the state considers the number of participants the center serves overall each year, how the center goes the extra mile to be a center of excellence, how the center is marketed to special populations, and how the center serves those populations, and also the number of special trips and events the center offers throughout the year. The overnight motor coach trips bring in a large amount of people. These people often in return to the center for other activities and programs. During the week of the trip, each person is counted towards daily attendance. This boosts the number of average of year of the year's attendance for the center. Do you realize that by sending people to Aging Services, these people are more likely to stop attending the Hamlet Senior Center, causing lower attendance? Do you know that during the last recertification process, the center received an accommodation from the state for the motor coach travel trips? This is awarded because the center has gone that extra mile, and it's serving adults. Should the center not meet these requirements and more, the center could lose the title of excellence and this grant funding. Prior to COVID, the center had over 120 people registered to go to New Orleans. I know this because I was one who registered to go. These 120 people came into Hamlet each month, making payments for the trip. While they were here, I'm sure some bought gas, ate meals, and they provided free positive publicity about all the great things the Hamlet Senior Center and the city of Hamlet offers. To send these people to another senior center or town does not promote the city or the senior center. Because of the affordability of the center's trips, many of the city's senior population can experience travel. Not only because of affordability, the seniors feel safe going with the senior staff whom they love and trust. The center serves a group of people that throughout the years have been underserved and underrepresented. They come to the Hamlet Center because the center fits their needs. Each person who comes to the center feels welcomed, respected, appreciated, and heard. When participants were told that the city was cutting out their motor coach trips, many stated that they would not go to any other senior center, and to be honest, why should they? Why should this service be taken away? Why serve them any less than any other senior center? Some of the elderly no longer drive or can drive long distance because of a handicap or other health reasons. They rely on the Hamlet Senior Center, providing them a better quality of life. That is what a senior center is, and that is what is expected. Trips are selected to allow individuals to enjoy something that is meaningful to them. This gives them opportunities to be adventurous, fulfill lifelong dreams, and new experiences in the latter years. The month of May is Older Americans Month, and it has been as long as I was the director and can remember. This year's theme is Aging Unbound. Offers an opportunity to explore a wide range of aging experiences and to promote the importance of enjoying independence and fulfillment of paving our own paths as we age. Mr. Mayor, based on the years past and the agenda, you're signing a proclamation tonight where our community benefits when people of all ages and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. Recognizing the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults, may need to make choices about how they age and build a better community by residents by not limiting the thinking of the aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. You will urge residents to celebrate our older citizen, help to create an exclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. I sincerely hope that all of you welcome and support this proclamation and the ideas and statements within it. As a former director of the senior center and knowledge of fundamental truths as a North Carolina senior Tar Heel delegate of Richmond County, I stand before you this evening to ask for you to reconsider in disallowing the senior center in providing motor coach recreational trips. Please don't send Hamlet's motor coach trips to another senior center, especially one that is not recognized as a senior center of excellence. I hope that I have provided you all with enough information to help make a decision that not only affects our adult population, but the city as well. There are so many reasons why more and more adults are choosing to travel with the Hamlet Senior Center and have done so for more than 30 years, and now I would like your response in regards to how this decision was made and what do you foresee for future motor coach travel trips for the Hamlet Senior Center?
Counsel, questions or comments?
Are the trips confined to people from Hamlet?
No, ma'am. They come from everywhere over the South Carolin-
The people that go are not just, not just Hamlet people.
Not just Hamlet people.
But you are aware that we, Hamlet, funds the senior center. We get no county help, right?
I cannot hear you.
We get no county funding for our senior center. We're the only senior center in the county that pays its own budget. It's totally funded with the city of Hamlet budget, and you're talking about serving everybody in Richmond County, so I think, how many of the participants are actually citizens from Hamlet?
Councilman Covington, I have no way of knowing that. This evening, you've got quite a number of Hamlet people that are here that have traveled. That's something the director would have to provide for you. I don't have that data.
All right. Thank you.
But there are a large number of people from Hamlet, as well as surrounding areas.
Matt?
Sir.
With these trips, is this, I mean, are we funding these trips? Are they paying these trips? What was the, from the policy standpoint that you put in place, what was the reasoning behind that?
So, the answer to your first question is the trips are paid for by the participants. So, they essentially are contracting with a travel agency company. Anyone can host a trip. Your church group, you know, you can organize a trip, and if you get a certain number of participants in your trip, then you're given a voucher, as Ms. Sellers pointed out. That does come with some responsibilities. The decision was made with, in discussions with the senior center director about the possible conflict between the policy around gifts and our personnel policy of accepting gifts and any possible conflict with how those trips are administered. So, the senior center director is always the first person that goes on the trip, as Ms. Sellers pointed out, more as a stipend on behalf of the city. But if you get more than a certain number, then you get more free trips, and, you know, there are some concerns about fairness and how those are distributed. So, that was just an issue that I was discussing with the director at the staff level. We actually drafted some policies and had some back and forth about other options, and in that process, it was presented to me that the Council on Aging was willing to accept the responsibility of managing these trips on the senior's behalf, and I saw that as the best option, and so we moved forward with that.
Do I understand that the more people that sign up to go and pay, that's more that they can invite to go free?
Essentially, yes. Yep.
So, okay.
The staff members that goes with them, are they being paid on salary, and if so, how many hours a day?
Yeah, so there, anytime you get into travel and you're, the context matters, which position, whether it's exempt or not, what they're doing while they're traveling, it actually gets really complex, so I don't really have a simple answer for how many hours they get a day, but generally speaking, the director, which is a salaried position, would get like eight hours of pay, but we do have a comp time policy, so they would accrue some additional comp time, which would be like a non, it would be an expense to us in the future when they take that time off and are not at the center and we're paying them to be away.
That's in the taxpayer's pocket.
Right, but it's paid leave essentially.
But they would be working, though, right?
Absolutely.
It'd be no different than if they were, I'm just trying to see, is it a financial issue, or is it a improper benefit issue?
A conflict.
Or, you know, like a conflict, and, yeah. Mr. Morph, what do you think?
Before you go, Tacey, I'd just like to add, I think the problem comes in as far as whether or not they're working, depends on what they're doing. For example, if you're, if you're driving a vehicle, you're working. If you're riding in a vehicle, you could be considered not working, or like clocked out, depending on what type of position and what type of job you have. So, it gets, it gets complex, and like, if you're sitting in an airport, are you working or not working? And, and it's just a, it's a really big gray area.
If you're on a trip with any agency, I think you're working during the, the work day. I mean, it might be different hours and things like that, but, I mean, I sort of see where you're headed at.
Yeah, it's just a tough question to answer without looking at specific context.
I'm just wondering, why, why are we at this point? If it's financial, that's one thing. If it's not financial, you know, I would like to hear what the attorney has to say, and I mean, if there's any other things we could do, turn down the free voucher, take the free voucher and spread it out across the people that are signing up. I don't see much difference between us driving our van, and I managed to be honest with you, I don't.
Well, I agree. That's why we've continued to allow that.
Yeah, if there's a, I'm just asking you to speak to it, if there is a conflict, and could we address any such conflict internally?
Well, I, I think the manager is right to be concerned that the gifts policy is kind of followed throughout. I mean, that's so important for having transparent local government. This is, Ms. Sellers pointed out, is a little different, because you get a free seat, but the person's working, so be honest.
And they're not going on their own, they're going with the group.
That's right. So, what I would say is I'd want to go with the, with the manager and with senior center director, and we could come back with a, with a policy. But tonight, I can't really say whether, you know, the decisions have been made or, excuse me, on base or not.
As it stands, is it moved over to agency already?
The trips that are currently scheduled are, are being taken by the Council on Aging, so yes.
How many of, how many?
I think there's two trips, do you know?
I think there are.
Three, maybe.
Ken, do you know how many are going?
I don't.
There's the Niagara Falls trip.
That's, that's the only one I'm aware of, Niagara Falls.
I think there's, I thought there, I believe there's one more, but I could be wrong about that.
Yeah.
But the trips aren't canceled. They're still going on the trips.
Yeah, the trips aren't canceled, they're just not being-
They're just not leaving from the Hamlet Senior Center.
Does the travel agency not furnish somebody on that bus? The travel agency, do they not furnish a monitor or something?
No, no, that's the response.
On the bus, and you're on your own.
They, they're the certified driver, and the director of the center would be taking care of- care of everyone's needs. It's work.
I think Ms. Sellers has made a very good informative statement. And I think she's made a very good compelling argument. And, and I think, I don't care how flat you make a pancake, it's two sides to every story. And I think, I think she has made a very compelling argument about keeping the senior citizen and the trips as they are. It's been going on for 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Of more.
Yes, sir.
No problem. Nobody's had a problem. I did not realize that the people, I'm not talking about the, the people that's paid to go on the trip, but the people who organize it have a tremendous responsibility of organizing this thing, keeping everything in order, doing this and doing that. I think as far as someone getting a trip, they well deserve it. I just, I just don't see the problem. I think, I think basically, I understand what the city manager is saying, I understand his position. But this has been going on for 30 years or more, no problem, everybody's happy. My way of thinking, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Well, thank you, Councilman Sellers.
To that, to that comment, I definitely, I want, I want to see the Senior Center continue with this, but we definitely, I think we definitely need counsel to help us out with that. I definitely don't want to see it go to aging. I want to see that center of excellence stay within the state, within the Hamlet Senior Center. I love the Hamlet Senior Center. So I want it to continue, but I do understand the issue. But I would let you guys know that, I hope you would understand that we got to have some information from council first, as far as what we need to change or wording or if it needs to spread out throughout all the people that's going on the trip, whatever the case is. But under no circumstances do I want to see it moved over to the agent center.
Thank you, Councilman Sellers. Thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions I could answer?
I think in all fairness to Matt, though, we need to say that our concern came about, we didn't go after this. It fell in our lap.
Right. It didn't.
And for some irregularities that had occurred. And our concern was that if there's more than one free trip, should it not be distributed among the participants? Take the value of the trip and discount everybody's traveling trip by that amount of money rather than just give it to certain individuals. It's not sending anybody else. It's an issue of fairness for us and seeing that everybody is well looked after. I don't think.
Anybody wants the seniors not to have a good time. I don't, that doesn't bother me in the slightest, but it does bother me if, for the reasons that it came to our attention, and those are obviously things we don't, can't and won't disclose, but you need to know that we did not go looking for this. See, it was not an arbitrary concern. It was a concern that occurred out of some irregularities. And then it came to light that there were free trips being offered. My concern was that these free trips ought to benefit everybody that was paying on this.
That's certainly a policy that could be established.
They created the free trips with their payments, so they should benefit from the free trip value.
In the case of the trip prior to COVID of 120 participants registered to go, that was four buses. And on each bus, it had to have an escort. I was asked myself to be an escort. Staff was going to go and be an escort. You had to have somebody on each bus. And as a stipend where the city didn't have to pay the cost, room and board, that's where that stipend comes in to help.
Yeah.
Who takes care of the Senior Center when staff's gone? Who takes care of the Senior Center when staff's gone?
The director will be there. Ms. Darce will be there, Chadler.
So the director is not going?
Some trips she does go and some she does not.
When she's not there and nobody else on our city staff is there, who is responsible for the Senior Center?
Mr. Bayless, I cannot hear you. Could you speak a little louder?
He said, when she is gone and staff is gone, who is responsible for the Senior Center?
She'll have volunteers.
So no city employees down there, so a lot of times when these trips are going on?
The staff is always there. Darce is there, Chadler is there, they all pay the staff.
That's all I want to know.
I, I would just like to say, I see where you, from, from our standpoint, where you were coming up with this. I mean, I would like to get the attorney's idea of what we can do to try to make this work. I don't want to see it go anywhere else either. And on that same, on that same wavelength there, I would like to see the Hamlet Senior Center start getting a little funding from the county for other issues to even make it even better. But I don't see those two as being together in this situation. I feel like that everybody wants this to work. And I really feel it's just a matter of, nobody wants to get free trips and give them out to friends or whoever or whatever.
Right.
But I, I would push back on the fact that the Senior Center employee is on that trip. They're working. I mean, I've chaperoned youth trips from church for a long time, and you're working, you work hard. But I would like to see us, let's work together, the, the center, the city. And I'm sure TC can figure out exactly how we can do this. I don't think it's going to be hard, I just think it's going to take some time to put it together to make it happen, so.
With policies in place that are of standard throughout any travel or any activity.
I have a question. On your trips and you say you have to be stationed on each bus, what about security? Does the director assume that responsibility for the security for the?
Yes, sir.
Participants?
Yes, sir.
It all falls on the, on the director and the senior citizen?
Yes, sir. And each one does sign a waiver. And if it's a motor coach company, they can buy, purchase insurance that covers them. There's no liability to the city.
No liability to the city?
No, sir.
Thank you. You know, after hearing all about the free, the free ride or the free ticket for someone, after hearing what you've had to say, I don't think, I don't think they get a free, free ticket. I think they're working just as hard as the other person that they're with. I mean, another director, assistant, or whoever they are. They're on a working trip. These other people that paid, they're having fun, they're enjoying the trip. These people are actually working.
Yes, sir.
So I don't see, I don't really look at it now as a free ride or free trip. I don't think it's free.
It's not. It's not.
I think it's a working trip for whoever, whoever goes. I think it's a labor of love.
Absolutely. It was my ministry. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has information that, on these trips, something she hasn't said already? Wait a minute, I got, okay. That has to be something she hadn't said already. Come on up. State your name when you get up here.
My name is Imogen Thomas. And I like to say that I have been a registered nurse for the past 45 years. She has qualified medical staff on the buses that if someone needs some attention, we are there to help out. But before I get to that after, I want to say that May is older Americans' month. And as you know, this is a privilege that has been denied to many. So we look out for each other. She has gone over being the center of excellence, and that's where we want to be. I wanted to retire, and I did, four and a half years ago. And the first thing I wanted to do was join that Senior Center. I passed there every morning, going to work. And I said, when I get, when I retire, I'm going right there. And that's exactly what I did. And I do volunteer my time there for anything that's needed there. They need someone to watch over the student nurses when they come to do vital signs, I do it. Or what, whatever process that takes place at that center, if I'm needed, I'm there. There are several nurses of us, several nurses there that we help out during those times. So I want you to know that out of the 100 counties in North Carolina that provide senior citizen centers, I contacted 56 of them. And out of the 56, there was 100% participation providing experiences of overnight travels to their members. Some of the centers even asked me if I wanted a packet. And I told them I would live too far to come on their trips. But I just wanted you all to know that we are not, we are not excluded. We are, we should be included in dealing with our senior citizens because, as you know, it provides a, a life of fullness for them and they are able to matriculate through the rest of their lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen in the, gentlemen in the back. This isn't something she's already covered, is it?
I'm the preacher, no, sir.
Okay. All right. State your name and go from there.
My name is Michael Patrick, and I am a local pastor here in Richmond County. And I too am a member since July of 2022. I too am a member, a registered member of the Hamlet Senior Center. And my purpose for coming tonight to speak on behalf of the center is to employ on your thoughts about what the scripture talks about when we're talking about our gray head folks. Obviously, I don't have any hair, so you can't see the gray hair. Psalm 71 and 18 says, "God is searching for people who will trust Him fully." The Lord did not save us so we could lounge endlessly in His goodness, mercy, and glory. He had an eternal purpose in choosing each one of us, and that purpose goes beyond blessings, fellowship, and exposure. The social needs in Maslow's hierarchy theory, it embraces love, acceptance, and belonging. And this is what drives human behavior. At this particular level, our seniors, I have seen them actually walking to the center, those that live in walking distance because they don't have transportation. It gives them that opportunity to walk back and forward, even in the rain with umbrellas. So there is some type of connection that the citizens of Hamlet, right here in the city limits, have with the Hamlet Senior Center. The question is, what part of the equation has caused the need to move what the Hamlet Senior Citizen have, Center has worked so hard to achieve in being the center of excellence? And now, certain events are being outsourced to other agencies in the county. I grew up in Hamlet. I'm proud of Hamlet. And everything that takes place in Hamlet, we ought to all feel proud as to being a part of Hamlet. And truly, I am part of the Hamlet Senior Center. I've spoken there on occasions in reference to giving some kind of insight on, on how to live, on whatever topic I needed to talk about. And this was, has gone over very well at the Hamlet Senior Center. And to outsource any event is definitely a disgrace, in my opinion, to the city of Hamlet because the only way that we can build, you cannot continue to take away from what you're building on. What do we need to do to maintain the transparency and the integrity of the Hamlet Senior Citizen Center? My recommendation is, first of all, let's follow Pablo's theory, I'm sorry, Maslow's theory. And that is embrace love, embrace acceptance, and embrace belonging. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, my name is Mildred Dixon. That's D-I-C-K-S-O-N. I'm also a member of the Hamlet Senior Center. I look forward to it. I retired in 2013. Like Ms. Thomas that came up, I'm a registered nurse, retired. And I have a vast experience working with the mental health issues from nursing. A lot of our residents live alone. And anyone know that if you live alone, you can become extremely lonely, maybe even have a little bit of paranoia if you hear noises that are not familiar to you. Recently, I was a caregiver for about 20 months, and I didn't realize my stress level was increasing until I started having physical signs and symptoms. I'm no longer a caregiver, so now I have the freedom to really take advantage of what's going on at the center. But please consider that you do have people that live alone, and you do have people that perhaps are taking care of children and grandchildren. It shouldn't be that way for most of us, but it happens sometimes because of the society ills that we continue to see happen. And I'm sure most of the times you hear on the news, people that commit a lot of these acts of violence and everything, they blame it on mental illness. We don't have the elderly committing mental illness to others but to themselves. So please keep that in mind, that it can be a mental factor involved. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has something on this subject that has not been mentioned? Okay, I think before I go on, I'm going to address council and ask council for a motion on this so that we can move on with it.
I think that it's appropriate for us to maybe step back and let Matt and Sarah sit down and come up with some, some policies for this before we pay. We need, we need some structure. We just, we can't give that with a motion right now. And I think if they come up with some policies that will regulate and govern the existence of trips, whether they're overnight, day trips, 10 weeks, then everybody plays by the same deck of cards. And I think that's important.
I agree.
I agree with that. Can we put this on the agenda then for next month?
Sure.
And I'd like to, I'd like to commend all the people at the hard work and the labor of love at the senior citizen, you all for our senior citizens, you to be very well committed, and I thank you.
Well, how about the, how about the trip that's, that is being planned now to Niagara Falls? Is it imminent?
They're scheduled, two of them. They're already scheduled, right?
I know, but we can't wait on policy if they've already got the thing scheduled.
The trip's planned.
I mean, are we, are they going to go on with the pro?
That was, that's according to what Matt says.
There's been no, there's been no changes to the people that were already planned to go on that trip. The people that were registered are still going.
It's still going to be.
Still going, yeah.
It's still making.
Okay, what I was, I was talking about, I mean, the trips, we don't have time to, we don't have time to form policies and talk about.
When is the trip? So we can.
I have, I have another question on it. In the 30-plus years that we've had the center, Ms. Sellers, has there ever been any incident of anything going to foul on any of the trips? Any trouble with any of the?
I've had participants to get sick and go into the hospital and sit with them. I've had people to fall, get hurt, and go into the hospital and sit with them. It's part of your job, it's your responsibility.
I understand, but I was, that answers my question, any kind of incidents of any foul play for the safety of them? No foul play? That was my main question.
Well, we've got a work session next Tuesday night. We could maybe get a policy together and bring it before then.
Yeah, we, we had policies drafted.
Okay.
We already have, so the, the time is not going to be an issue.
Okay.
But is this trip to Niagara Falls still going to be given to aging services to fulfill or is it going to be given back to the Hamlet?
What's the date on it, Susan? What's the date?
June 4th through the 10th.
June 4th through the 10th. I don't know why we couldn't continue to do that.
I think we should.
To interfere with the program right now.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
I think Hamlet ought to continue doing what they're doing, period.
Right. I agree. Are we, are we good there now? Are we all right? Okay there, Susan?
I'm sorry.
Are we okay there now?
I'm sorry, I still didn't hear.
Are we okay now?
I'm sorry.
Are we okay?
All right. And we will, we will take this.
But it was been decided, what do I put in the minutes?
Yeah, we're going to put it on to the work session. Yeah, we're gonna put it on to the work session next month. Yeah, and he's gonna meet with the director. No, but the trips that are scheduled, they can continue with that.
Has, has on.
Regardless.
Yeah, no interference.
Okay.
Continue doing what you're doing.
All right, who has something else now for the council for tonight? Anybody? Okay, restrain yourself now, Gerard.
Please don't do that, Mayor. We're adults enough in here, right?
We've been a long time.
I've been restrained enough, that door was locked for a public council meeting.
Sorry about that.
Locked for a public meeting.
Did you knock?
It's not locked from the inside.
We didn't know.
You heard me tap, right? That's why you saw, I didn't want to interrupt the speaking right there.
If you knocked, somebody should have opened the door or something.
I tapped on it right there, I didn't want to be a-
Knocked on it or whatever.
You know, I got manners, I'm from Charlotte Street, so I didn't want to be abruptly, but, but I, but I-
Go ahead.
All right.
Well, you came in that door and you could have knocked on her on that door. It's all right, so, go ahead.
McQueen?
Now, I'm just being honest, I mean-
Peace and love, brother, peace and love.
Yeah, it's peace and love.
All right, peace and love.
It's true, too, I mean.
All right, true, you heard me say I tapped twice, did you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm concerned, and actually, Mr. Sellers, you hit it right on the money when you said, you know, or, Chief Martin, one of y'all said, after hearing and listening, you got a whole different perspective. I applaud when communication works, because it's two-way, hearing, listening, not just talking. I'm concerned with this comprehensive land use plan. I expressed this, y'all know I'm on the planning and zoning commission, I'm committed, whatever I do, you all know I'm committed to it. I asked when I first got on there, where's the 20-year strategic plan? I was told it wasn't finished yet, this comprehensive land use plan. Does anybody know how many African-American members are on that committee that's gotten together to do the plan?
I do.
How many, Matt?
One.
Who?
The director of the council for Partnership for Children.
And does she live in Hamlet?
Uh, I believe she does, yeah.
The outskirts, right?
I mean, I, I don't have her addressed, Gerard.
Okay.
You asked the question, I have the answer.
And you even said in food line, you recalled my saying, you're recalling that I wanted to be on that committee early on, correct?
It's your public comment, Gerard.
Okay, but I wanna make sure it's clear and truthful, as you said, McQueen. I'm disappointed that I wasn't put on there. Lot of us sacrificed our own time, our own money, don't ask for nothing. When I did come, when we first started the Coltrane Fest, and it's on record, it got tabled. I made it my mind then, I never asked anything else. I even, I didn't even ask for it to get on tabled. Recall, that's when Abby was mayor, you and I had dialogue in there, it's on record here. Luckily, with persistence and all of us finally listening, cooperating, and communicating, Coltrane is getting his due better than what he does. Still needs more, still is getting better than what was when, when I first came back here. Our diversity, luckily planning and zoning, we've got half women, half male, one-third African-American. I wanna see that equity and that diversity. Ladies and gentlemen, we know the times we're in, we know the progress that's needed. We are willing, we can make that happen. We've got two to three generations in this room right now. There's no reason that we should be going backwards. By having a diverse input, and especially for a population that's almost a third African-American, we've got one after a male like me who does, who, who has proven himself in getting things done, and, and being considered, and being altruistic in time and talent. We do not need to be overlooked. We do not need to be even, having, having to have this conversation in 2023. Just like when, I was thinking about when we had the issue about the geriatric hospital that was being proposed, and I said how we needed, this brings top-of-the-line jobs. We always talk about jobs and growth, top-of-the-line, whole different level jobs. And then I was thinking when the sister said about mental health, even then, it shows the demand is here, but there's also a demand for equity, also a demand for intentional diversity. I wanna make sure we do that, even in equity and contracts. We got a new budget coming up, a new fiscal year, on my birthday every year. I wanna make sure we start using some plans in these work sessions to say, how do we do this? So instead of having brain drain and talent going everywhere else, you heard me talk, like History Month and every year, I talk about Jay Kenneth Lee and the Henry Fries and other folks from here. Why did they have to go other places to do what they did when they still came from here, same person, just more support? So let's be supportive, let's continue listening, let's be diverse, let's be proactive, let's follow through and do what we say we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. Anyone else have anything for council that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we will move along. At this time, we will do the appointment of our new city clerk. Ms. Cindy Lill?
Wait, we hadn't appointed her yet. We hadn't appointed her yet. When? Not officially? We gotta appoint her first. We gotta make, we gotta make a motion to appoint her. And then you, then you administer those. You want me to make a motion?
Do I have, do I have a motion to?
Yes.
Appoint Ms. Cindy Terry as-
I will make a motion.
Second.
Wait, just a minute, I make a, wait a minute. I wanna make a motion based on the city manager's recommendation and in accordance with our city charter. I would, I would place in the nomination and recommend that we appoint Sidney Terry as our city clerk.
Second. Okay, I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise.
All right, now.
Now, we proceed.
Now, you, now you can admit us to.
Okay, moving along to item number seven, manager's presentation of the fiscal year 2324 budget message. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As a city of Hamlet's budget officer and city manager, I'm pleased to present for your consideration the recommended budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. The recommended budget is balanced at $10,784,320. This consists of a general fund of $7,362,820, a power bill budget of $217,000, and an enterprise fund budget of $3,488,200. The recommended budget levies a property tax rate of 76 cents per hundred dollars of value. The recommended budget appropriates $1.5 million approximately of fund balance in the general fund to cover the cost of capital assets and to balance the budget. There is no tax increase in the budget, this is consistent from previous years, and also there are no rate or fee increases proposed. The proposed budget closely resembles the budget from the prior fiscal year. We've done our best to budget revenues conservatively and anticipate cost increases in various sectors. The single largest source of general fund revenues are property taxes, which have remained relatively flat in recent years. The recommended budget projects $1.9 million in revenue to be received in ad valorem property tax in the upcoming fiscal year and $322,000 in vehicle tax. Staff and council have worked collaboratively to invest in our most critical needs while being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars. The second largest source of general fund revenues is sales taxes. The recommended budget projects approximately $1.4 million in the various sales taxes, which is a modest, modest increase from the current budget. Our organization is still recovering from the financial loss caused by Richmond County changing the sales tax distribution method. This change was the single largest loss of revenue in recent memory. Natural economic growth has helped make up for some of the initial loss following the change, but high inflation and increased cost of goods and services have limited these gains. The main three categories of sales tax revenue collected in FY 2020, 2021 totaled approximately the same as collections in 2015 and 2016. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, cumulative inflation during the same time is 24%. So deep budget cuts, limited capital investment, and decreased buying power have caused many problems which are extremely difficult to manage and will take years to recover from. The most critical asset in our organization is our people. Our employees are at the center of all the services we provide for our citizens. Following multiple years of wage stagnation, in July 2020, we implemented a market-based compensation plan. This market-based approach is, is a strategic shift from the traditional grade-and-step plan used for many years. Using salary survey information from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, we totally overhauled our pay plan. The new plan allowed us to develop measurable goals, track performance, and adapt to changing market forces in the future. The proposed budget includes a 4% cost of living increase to help this plan keep up with the rising wages in a competitive labor market. The 2023-2024 proposed budget includes critical investments in our employees and our services. In addition to the 4% cost of living increase, we are also adding a full-time city planner and converting an existing part-time position to a full-time position. We are also purchasing several new vehicles in multiple departments and new equipment to allow our personnel to better serve and protect our citizens. The two largest proposed purchases in the budget are a garbage truck and a new public works building and expansion to our facilities at the city shop. Another key focus in the proposed budget is investing in our existing facilities. Projects like replacing roofs, remodeling bathrooms, and installing safety equipment are not as exciting or noticeable in some cases, and most of these purchases have been deferred in prior years, even though, and even though they may not make headlines, these are necessary investments to maintain our existing facilities. Lastly, the recommended budget, as I mentioned before, does not include any utility or service rate increases. Rate increases were reviewed with city council during budget work sessions, but ultimately council decided that our citizens and customers should not incur a rate increase in the city of Hamlet when there are so many other economic uncertainties. The fiscal sustainability of our services will be dependent on revisiting this conversation on an annual basis. Currently, both fund balances for the general fund and enterprise funds are strong, and we project that the recommended budget will support and maintain the economic stability for the city residents, customers, and clients. And lastly, I'll mention that a copy of the city budget in its entirety, including the message and all the detail pages, will be available in city hall for public inspection. We will have a public hearing at our June regular meeting, and with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for the manager on that?
I don't have any questions, it's just a statement that the budget required a lot of concessions, cuts, things we couldn't do, things we want to do, things we needed to do, and things we're gonna have to do. And due to, like, like Matt said, the, the loss of revenue that we've received or, or not receiving from the, the county through the sales tax, has really hurt us over the past couple of years, and we, we keep saying it over and over again, it doesn't change, but at the end of the day, there may be a point in time where because of financial situations, services may have to start being, you know, get cut. So I'm, I'm proud of what we were able to do. It seems like yesterday this budget was like 4 million, and now it's, you know, it's pushing 10 million. And I mean, when you look at a 10 million dollar budget, and you're, you're, you're getting less than 2 million of that in sales tax, I mean, in ad valorem tax value, that's, there's a lot of stuff that he's doing and the employees are doing to save money. And I, I for one, like this budget, I think is, is, it's as lean as it could get, and the problem with lean budgets is it keeps putting us in a negative for the next year. So hopefully, at some point, maybe we can get some of this rectified and get some of the money back that we've lost.
Yeah, I believe you've done an excellent job with this budget.
I do, too.
A lot of work.
Thank you.
Matt, I'll also say that I appreciate an agreeance that people are number one, our employees, as well as our citizens. It's so lean, and it makes it hard to not increase services, it makes it extremely hard to not increase services. I mean, that would, that would solve some problems, but, you know, we just hate to do that, and, and we will, we will continue, I will continue to work against not increasing those, those services for our citizens, and especially coming off of pandemics and all sorts of things like that. I agree with Mr. McQueen, as we got in these sessions, we just could not increase services and bills and all that great stuff. So very lean, but very good budget, thank you for this, and continue to work through the sessions.
I agree, and I'd like to also thank Mr. Christian for the fine job he done and his doing with his staff, and the money that we lost, we won't get back, but hopefully we, next year, we'll start getting money that we can progress in. And I have all confidence in your ability to be diverse and plow the money. Thank you so much.
My primary concern has always been the employees, and fortunately, you've managed our money well enough so that we can continue to invest in them. They're the biggest asset we've got, and they always have been, and they always will be, so, thank you.
Thank you all, and I'd, I'd be remiss if I also didn't mention the assistance of our finance officer, Anna Miles, her and I worked closely, and when you say, "I manage the money," it's really a we thing, you know, we, we do it together, and, and it's a team effort here, and I wanted to thank her personally for that. I failed to mention that in my reading the statement, but we couldn't do it without her, and I'm, I'm grateful for her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edna, and she's a newbie, too.
She jumped right in.
She just jumped right in, that's right.
Anyone else got a comment? Okay, again, remember that we will have a hearing on this at the next meeting, which will be June 13th, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's regular city council meeting. Item number eight, at this time, we will have consideration of automatic aid agreement for fire protection.
You're up, Trey.
Yeah, I'd invite Trey, Chief Trey Goodwin from the fire department to brief you on what he's presented me with, and take it from there.
All right. So what I'd like to do is enter into an automatic aid agreement with East Rockingham Fire Department and Hoffman Fire Department.
And who?
What that'll-
Hoffman?
Hoffman and East Rockingham.
East Rockingham and Hoffman?
Yes, ma'am. And what that'll do is, it'll give us more manpower, it'll give us more pump capacity, more water on scenes. Our last ISO inspection, we got docked for, not the lack of people, we had just enough to meet the standard. We had 12, which ISO requires 12 for structural fires. With going into this automatic aid, it gives us our people plus theirs that either come to the call or come to the station. We would reciprocate with East Rockingham, but Hoffman said that they wouldn't need reciprocation from us because they already have two mutual aid departments. And what, what they'll send us will be one truck and two people, and East Rockingham, what we would do was send them one truck and two people. we would do was send them one truck and two people. If, whenever we have to go to their district, our people will come to the fire station, the city will not be unprotected. There was two different areas on the last ISO inspection that we could have got more points if we would have had automatic aid. We are four now, I'd like to go to a three. This would help along with some more things that we're trying to do at the fire station. But I will take any questions you have.
Did you say one truck, two people each way, either way?
Right. But in saying that, even though they're only sending two people, if they have five people go to their station to stand by, we'll get credit for those five also.
Do they come to our station to stand by or go to theirs?
No, they would go to theirs if we had the fire, and this is only on structural fires. What they would do is they would send a truck and two people to our fire. They would go to their station, we still get credit for those. And if we had to go to them for a fire, our people would come to the station, we'd send one truck and two people to their fire.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like it'd be just tremendous protection and better service if we would have this automatic system.
It would.
It would be, be more manpower, more water.
And...
And save lives.
The mayor, the mayor knows how hard it is to find people that wanna get in the fire service or, you know, any kind of...
And, you know, the state, with their rules and regulations, have gotten so down to the point that actually you're supposed to have, actually, you're supposed to have two departments, and not have three departments together on the mutual aid.
For the water hall.
Yeah, for water hall, and it affects your rating, but...
When's your next ISO inspection?
We had it in twenty twenty. The next one, they try to do it every five years, but it's probably gonna be in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Not far off, but...
COVID doesn't count, right?
Can you call for an ISO inspection? Like, can you call?
The problem is, is we've been doing this all along, but it just needs to be formalized.
So, it's gonna benefit the city, it'll benefit the citizens, it's gonna benefit you as a department, and it's gonna help with the rating.
Right.
I don't see any reason why we don't go ahead and do it.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. And, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, you're gonna go anyway, so why not make it official where we can reap the benefits of it, the citizens can reap the benefits of it, possibly, you know, maybe some of their insurance rates might go down over the long haul. I think it's a good idea, make a motion that we approve it.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves likewise. There you go, Trey.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Been a long time coming. Appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you, Trey.
Item number nine is consideration of the yard debris policy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just, you know, we've had the discussion in work sessions and in previous council meetings about having a policy around picking up yard debris, so this is the policy that we've drafted. In most cases, this pretty much is capturing in a policy what we're already doing. There are some minor adjustments and where we sought to clarify things. One thing that we adjusted that's a notable change is our previous lack of a policy, our previous practice was use weight as a unit of measurement for certain items, which, you know, we don't have scales on the trucks, and that's just not really, it's not really feasible to implement that type of standard. So, we favor a size standard here, which is about halfway down, I think it's the fifth or maybe sixth or seventh bullet. So, no limbs, branches, or trunks longer than six feet or larger than eight inches in diameter. So, that would be the limitation for what we would pick up with our standard residential curbside service. Additionally, at the bottom, we highlight the, for the convenience of our residents, we do have the option of a trailer that can be dropped off at your property that you can put things, yard debris, I should say, in yourself. We have a separate policy for the trailer usage when you're using it for household debris or construction debris, and that policy is already in place. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Matt. It says there, we have on that article about picking up different items and stuff, and I agree with it on the weight and construction stuff, but are we, does the city still use a pitchfork and a rake?
In some cases, yes.
In some cases?
Yeah, so they call them, they would differentiate what they would call hand piles, which are, you know, maybe smaller or not conducive to be picked up with a large piece of equipment, they would pick those up by hand.
Well, I see a lot of stuff here on this yard debris, but how can we best serve our citizens and taxpayers of Hamlet by picking up what they put at the curb? I mean, can we not just pick it up and put a fine on the people or instead of writing them a note?
Well, we are, we are picking, this is the service, this is, we are picking it up. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, and I don't, maybe I'm not being very, but it says right here, we already have in, on our, in article, shall be the duty of every property owner in the city to keep his property free from noxious weeds, trash, and other forms of offensive animal and vegetable matter or refuge which may be dangerous or prejudicial to the public health of which it may constitute a public nuisance. And to give them a ten-day notice. We've got stuff in Hamlet that's been sitting out for a month or longer, like on Terry Street down there in the corner of Terry, and it's just been on mattresses, household furniture, it's just a nuisance to the neighbors.
So, that would be, that would be a code enforcement violation, which would be a different process and not, that's not this service, this, that would be something that if you had a noxious condition on your property, the ordinance that you referenced would allow us to, you know, write you a letter notifying you that you're in violation and so on and so forth. It may result in fines or other things. The service that we're talking about here is for yard debris specifically. So, if you put something out of the curb, what are, who's gonna pick it up? When are they gonna pick it up? What, how are we gonna pick it up? And, I mean, that's what this policy is trying to address.
Okay, well, maybe I wasn't clear in my statement either, but it comes back up and put the branches in one, and different stuff, pine straw, leaves, and the branches on it and be picked up. Do we need a vacuum truck and need the boom truck and pick that stuff up? Or do we just leave it lying there for weeks at a time?
Well, the two pieces of equipment you just mentioned have been out of service due to maintenance issues. The reason for splitting or asking the customers to separate the debris is because different pieces of equipment pick up things differently. So, if you're trying to pick up a pile of leaves with a leaf machine, and there's a bunch of sticks and branches in it, it kind of stops them from being, from being able to do that, or it damages the machine and puts it down like it, like it has now. So, I mean, we could operate without those pieces of equipment, but, you know, I think that we always try to give our employees the best tools to do the job, and in this case, you know, some of those equipments, pieces of equipment are down, which have slowed us down and put us behind and are not, those aren't ideal situations, but we do our best to manage it. So, and this policy is an attempt at managing the discussion that we've previously had around what's too much to be picked up, like what's, like, can you put a whole tree? And we talked about contractors and other, other things. This is, this is seeking to establish some parameters which everyone can follow and understand, and we can, everybody can play off the same sheet of music, so to speak.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, why don't we just, why don't we pick it up? Instead of being an ISO on our streets and by, within city limits of Hamlet, why don't we just pick it up and haul it off and then deal with the homeowners?
Because if we do that, Oscar, everybody will start doing that. They'll say, oh, it doesn't matter, they'll come get it eventually.
So, that'd be the...
We've been down that road a hundred times.
A hundred times, okay. That, that answered my question.
The rules don't make any difference if they think somebody will pick up their slack.
You've been there, done that, yeah.
What we've done is, we've tried to eliminate these people that come in, clean out an entire house and throw all of it out.
Throw it all on the street, couches, furniture, appliances.
I mean, you don't mind picking up a man's old washing machine or whatever, or, you know, not a whole house full of stuff.
And we have a policy that allows them to call for a special pickup if they've got furniture or mattresses or whatever, they simply call and make a time to get it picked up, but it's not considered normal garbage.
But can the city charge them for picking that stuff up?
I don't know whether we charge them or not.
Should we put a price on it? Isn't there a price tag for picking up different types of stuff?
There has been in the past, but there is not currently.
Not currently, it's not being enforced, if we pick it up.
Yeah, I would, I don't remember exactly when, but council made a decision to eliminate that policy of, I think they called it the sticker program, so, but that is no longer, based on council's action, we have not, we're not enforcing that.
And a lot of times, the people that are doing it are the folks that own property, don't live here, people move out, they come and just put everything at the street.
And they go away.
Yeah, and...
And disappear.
You'd have the situation that you got on Terry Street all over town.
All over town.
Because we have so much rental property, we have so many people that leave in the middle of the night, and all it takes with them, what they've got on their back, they don't care about the rest of it. I've cleaned them out before.
They throw their responsibility on the city.
If we'll take it.
And taxpayers, if we let them.
Can I get a motion on the yard debris?
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Proves likewise. Thank you. Moving along to item number ten, proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas the City of Hamlet recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports, older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas the City of Hamlet can work to build an even better community for our older residents by increased quality of life and education, not limiting thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive effects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing communities' diversity. I, Mayor Bill Bayless, of the City of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim May of twenty twenty-three to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. I encourage all adults age fifty-five up to join the Hamlet Senior Center. Signed, this date, Bill Bayless.
Good.
Okay, moving along to item ten A. This, recently, we had the passing of Dr. Fred McQueen. I've known Dr. McQueen since he was in the military and was coming down here to work at the emergency room at Rich Memorial.
Yeah.
He was a fine man. I thank a lot of him, we were good friends, worked a lot together, and took a lot of his patients in there to the emergency room for him, was a good emergency doctor. So, I would like at this time to, for the City of Hamlet Memorial Proclamation for Dr. Fred McQueen. Whereas on behalf of the City of Hamlet, we wish to extend our sincere condolences over the recent passing of Dr. Fred McQueen. And whereas Dr. Fred McQueen served this community in the medical field, beginning in nineteen seventy-four at the Rich Memorial Hospital Emergency Room, and then recruited by Hamlet Sand Hills Medical Center in nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas Dr. McQueen opened his own practice in nineteen eighty and continued to serve the community until his retirement at the end of twenty twenty. And whereas Dr. Fred McQueen served his country in the U.S. Army, and whereas Dr. McQueen served as the president of the Richmond County Chapter of the NAACP for more than thirty years, and whereas Dr. Fred McQueen was the first black doctor to serve as president of the Richmond County Medical Society, and whereas Dr. McQueen was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine in January twenty sixteen, and whereas Dr. Fred McQueen earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all with whom he came into contact. And whereas Dr. McQueen's death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Hamlet, the Hamlet City Council extends its sincere thimpises upon Dr. Fred McQueen's passing on April the thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, this ninth day of May twenty twenty-three. Signed, Bill Bayless, Mayor.
Good.
And I guess I could sit here for a long time and talk about him, but when I first got to know him, he was still in the Army, and he was coming down to work part-time at the emergency room at Rockingham. And I always, when I took people in there, I went in after accidents or whatever, I always enjoyed seeing him there because he knew what he was doing, didn't have to worry about it.
Yes, he did.
And the other thing is, he did a lot of things for the students in this county, too. And there's just so many things that he's done that we just can't recognize on this one piece of paper.
And he did it without any expectation.
That's right, he never asked anything for it.
He never asked any, 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 anything beyond that, he did it because he was just a good man.
Yep. My wife worked with him in the emergency room over there for years.
He was just a good, good man.
And, okay, moving along to item number eleven, city manager's report.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a couple of brief announcements about events we're having here in town. On May twenty-fifth, we'll have Yoga by the Tracks, that's a Thursday, and then the following Friday, we'll have our Food Truck Fridays and the Box Car Concert Series featuring the Jonathan Robinson Band. All those events are free and open to the public. Before our next regular meeting, we will be closed for Memorial Day on May the twenty-ninth. There will be no alteration to any regular garbage pickup. And I know it's a month ahead, but I want to go ahead and mention it, that we are having July Fourth fireworks this year on July the first, which is the Saturday before July, the actual Independence Day. The reason for that is the change in the fireworks vendor, we could not get a date on the fourth, but we do want folks to come out, we will have activities for children and everybody and food trucks, and it'll be a good time. So, we will publish more details about that in the future, but it is a change to the norm, so I wanted to go ahead and mention it now, and again repeatedly along the way, so that folks know that we will be having fireworks on the Saturday before July the fourth, and that's all.
Anybody got a question for the manager? If not, we'll move along to the council, Mr. Moore.
I would just like to remind everybody that the Hamlet American Legion Baseball Team Post Forty-Nine will be having their opening game on June the fifth at six thirty P.M. for the preliminary ceremony, and the first pitch will be at seven. We have several things planned for this event. George Whitfield will be there, he's a legendary coach, Richmond County and Hamlet. For book signing, we'll have Ben Moss, our North Carolina representative there, he's gonna be there to throw out the first pitch. We'll have our mayor from Hamlet, Mr. Bayless, and also mayor from Rockingham, John Hutchison's gonna be there, as well as other mayors, Dobbins Heights and Hoffman and wherever. We are also inviting all veterans. The veterans will be admitted free, and all students are admitted free, whether they're school age, school, grammar schools, high school, middle school, college, if you're a student, you're a student, and your admission will be free. We're having some other, other activities, military, military music, different things along those lines. I just hope everybody will, will participate, come out, and enjoy the opening game for the twenty-three season of the Hamlet American Legion Post Forty-Nine baseball team. Come out and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sellers?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the participants tonight at our meeting, all the attendees. I really like to support a Hamlet senior citizen that came up and... I really like to support a Hamlet senior citizen that came up and, and came up and made a fine representation of it. And I'd like to support Brother Eddie and the American Legion team. Come out and support them. Get a fine evening, fine time around good, safe company. And I'd like to welcome our new city clerk, Ms. Cindy. Thank you and welcome to Hamlet. Looking forward to working with you a lot. That concludes my remarks.
Mr. Stewart?
Welcome to the city. Thank you so much. To the attendees, I'd like to say to Mr. Marson, not only thank you for your comments, but you stay for the meetings, which shows for the, for the City of Hamlet. I'd like to thank all the attendees that come, and I want to encourage people, when you come and you, you have comments and you come, please stay for the entire meeting. Please see and understand and listen to what's going on throughout everything that's happening in Hamlet, not just your issue, but understanding everything that's happening in Hamlet. I want everybody to, the, the ABC Board has done a few things for the, for the ABC Center in Hamlet. They've replaced the floors, they've replaced some doors, some windows. So please stop by and check out the beautification.
They're giving away prizes?
Of the, and, and speaking of that, they are having an actual tasting in June. And so more information will be coming for that. Thank the mayor for the proclamation of the older adult citizens. And lastly, but definitely not least, thanking the city, the mayor, and the council for the proclamation for Dr. Fred McQueen. He will forever be in my heart. I can never forget him. I have a mark on my face where I fell off of a table at six years old, and my parents took me to the emergency room. And this, this African-American doctor out of Fayetteville greeted us, first time we've met him. And I was so rambunctious and I couldn't be held down, and he put me in a straitjacket to hold me down, so he could put stitches in my eye because I had cut my face wide open. So I will forever know him and be grateful to him and love him. He is one of the, part of the reason why I attended an HBCU. He is one of the, partly the reasons why I pledged the fraternity that I'm in. And I'll just lastly say that he is one of the most admirable men that I've ever known in my life. Thank you.
And he did it all with a smile and all kind of love.
Ms. Covington?
Well, I'm just, my, and like I said, we've had a lot of issues here tonight and had a lot of people to, to come and present their issues. And I guess we'll resolve them all next Tuesday. But I want to say I'm pleased to be able to finish this budget this year with no increase in fees, no increase in taxes. I don't think people realize that there's a lot of sacrifice that goes into that, a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice. They have to, we have to give up equipment, we have to give up programs. We can't do all the things we'd like to do, or maybe that other cities do that are not plagued with the problem that we have. But your city employees are the ones who give up the most because they're either giving up a pay raise, or giving up equipment to work with, or any number of things. And I just hope that the people in the City of Hamlet appreciate how much work goes into maintaining cost of living here that is appropriate for everyone. And particularly because we have a large number of senior citizens, a large population, who live on a fixed income. And this matters. And so where, where some things may not seem to go your way, I think you need, everybody needs to be cognizant of the big picture, that there's a lot that goes into it. I'm also very excited about the American Legion baseball program, and I want to reemphasize that the program starts at 6:30, first pitch is at 7 o'clock.
Mr. McQueen?
So I'll probably be repeating some of what you already heard. Whenever Dr. McQueen passed away, the county lost a really great man. Back in the early 90s, when I moved up here, the, he was the workers' comp doctor for the city. And just through bad luck, I guess, I wound up going to see him probably more than anybody. And we developed a really good friendship. He quickly became my doctor. And he had a, he had some ties to where I came from in Robinson County, so that was really cool. He was a great guy, good doctor, and even better supporter of the entire county. And we will definitely miss him and his leadership. Around, maybe, might, might be wrong with the date, maybe you can help me, but around six months ago, five, six months ago, the council unanimously agreed to support the police chief in hiring cadets to go to the training academy. Because just the entire environment surrounding our police officers in the country has been chaotic, to say the least. And these guys and ladies put their lives on the line every day. And unfortunately, every agency in the United States is short officers, and we were no exception. The police chief successfully hired a first group of four. And through the decision that this council made, those people probably would have not been able to go to that school and get certified because they had to have an income. And it was an expense, but it was definitely one that was worthwhile. And last night, I had the pleasure of going to Robinson Community College to attend the graduation for the first class of the group that we sent and paid to go to be police officers for our city. And I think we're in good shape with, with those four that's there. I think there's another one that's in another BLET program. So hopefully, and everything goes well with that, and we can keep that policy in place because it's going to benefit the entire community, not just the city. The next thing is, somebody called and, and had a complaint, imagine that, right? There's a.
You got a lot of them lately.
Yeah, I know.
It's getting warmer weather coming outside.
For sure. So apparently there's a, and I've seen it, it's 177, maybe in between Rollins and Highland. There's a, a house that's got several cars pulled up to the front. They got the hood up, they got price points on the windows and things like that. Is there anything we can do with that?
Yeah, we've had some discussions about that. You know, there's a, a legal position that I think we would have to take, which is that is a commercial use of a residential property, and we would issue them a zoning violation consistent with the violation policy, part of our zoning ordinance that it prescribes. The recourse there is if they refuse to comply, there would be a fee, usually is, I mean, you have to follow whatever the policy says. The, the one concern I think that we've had, as we've discussed this internally, and since we brought it up, we'll just speak openly about it, is right across the street from that, we have a, a, a house that has about six, five or six large commercial vehicles in it as well. And just being fair and consistent, I think that using that same logic, that that would also arguably be a commercial use of a residential property. And I think it's, it's, it's kind of, I need direction from council so that if we go out there and enforce that, that, you know, we'll all be on the same page before we kind of stir that pot, so to speak, so.
Well, I mean, I understand that. I just, I see a difference as the policy is now between someone engaging in like the business action, like own their property, as opposed to a person that owns business vehicles that are parked on their property. There's not, and, and TC, you may could add to that. I don't see a apples and apples deal there because the person that's selling the cars are going to have people stopping there, going up, looking at the vehicles and things, where the other person is just parking a vehicle there. And it could be any vehicle, it could be any business here that has a, a, a commercial vehicle that's parked on their property. The commercial vehicles that's on that property, they don't violate any of the code.
They don't do any business from my house.
Yeah, that, that we see, I mean, it's just, it's, it's the vehicles, trailers, and things like that. I mean, I guess it could open up the standpoint of, maybe it could, maybe it should, I don't know. But I see it as two distinctively different things, and I would just defer to TC to see what he has to say about that.
Let me get with the manager about that, Mr. McQueen, and we can report back to you all.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Cool, yeah, that's it. And I will just repeat what the chief said, and Ms. Covington and, and everyone else about the American Legion. There's been a lot of work put into, to the field down there. The city's done a lot, the American Legion's done a lot, Chip's done a lot specifically. He's, he's run that program very effectively and efficiently throughout the whole year, keeping, I mean, he's helped with the, you know, boots on the ground, working up there. And he's also fielded the team and, and did all the other things. And I hope that we have a really good turnout to support this endeavor for the entire season, specifically for the first game in the opening day. I think that that would be a benefit to the city. And I'll just like to throw some, some kudos to Chief Martin. He is, he's put in a lot of time and effort on this. He's not just, you know, got on there and made a couple of phone calls. I mean, he's, 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 he's been behind this for a while and has been the lead from the council, much like Councilwoman Covington was whenever we were having the sales tax issue. So this is things that are not really a part of the duties and the job that we have specifically. But, you know, whenever somebody goes out of their way like that on their own time to do that, that's special. And I'd just like to thank him from just seated at council.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. One thing we failed to mention, though, the park, we talked about the park, we talked about the American Legion, but it's going to be at the Hamlet Memorial Park. That's where the American Legion play, is the Hamlet Memorial Park. And that's, that's where we'll be. And agreeable, the City of Rocking, the City of Hamlet has put in a tremendous amount of effort and support to upgrade the field, upgrade the park. We've, we've done a lot of work up there, and I, I just encourage people to come look and see what we have done.
Yeah. And last thing, welcome, Mr. Terry, as the clerk.
Oh, me too, I'm sorry.
There's already ordinance gets out.
Okay. I want to thank the entire council for the work they've done. We've got people who've taken on special activities, like Mr. Martin, Ms. Covington, Mr. Stewart on the Dr. McQueen thing, and just, they just take an item and they run with it. And it just makes everybody work together so well. Mr. Martin, of course, he's really put a lot of heart into this American Legion thing, and that's graciously appreciated. Edna, thank you again for the work you've done with the city manager on the budget. It's just, it's been smooth, for us anyway, and been pleasant. The senior center director, I know we've heard a lot of things tonight about senior center, but we've got a senior center director that took it over, and when she took it over, she carried on with a senior, with a center of excellence. And we are the only one in our area that has that center of excellence. And she really puts her heart in it, she works hard on it, and so I know she cares about it. The, May the 18th, 18th to the 21st, the Hamlet Lions Club has managed to get the rides in here to kind of have a spring fling. And they'll be here from the 18th to the 21st down at Fairgrounds. And we expect to have some food trucks down there and that sort of thing. There's no cover charge to get in, just pay for the rides, and we're looking forward to that. I appreciate the work that the city employees have done, especially considering they have had some equipment down, but I understand it's coming back now. And so that's a good thing. And I hope everyone has a great Memorial Day, looking forward to it. And we are certainly glad to have you with us all, thank you so much. And with that, I will close comments. I would ask at this time for a motion to go into closed session per NC General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, and 6, attorney-client privilege and personnel. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Proves likewise. Gerard, thank you for your interest in the community, and we appreciate what you do.